313, so the first three letters are the abbreviation of the township that the bridge is in and then the number after that's just our numbering system. So Coon Pack Road, Canal Road, Sixteenth Road, Pickerton Road, and Christmas Rock Road will all be done this year.
Sheriff Mike, can I ask a question about this slide? It's possible, of course, but those seem to have kind of a center of, a center mass in terms of where they're located. That, is that kind of by design that, that paving projects are kind of in an area, in an area, in an area, so to speak, or is this just kind of a anomaly?
Okay, that's a good question. So, our, our first, um, our first goal with the paving projects is to address the roads that need them. Okay, so we try to do that first. And then if there's the ability to be able to move some things around and keep them in one area, that helps with price. So we'll do that, but that's not the first priority.
Very good answer. Please continue.
Okay, one of the big things we've got going is the Refugee Road Corridor. So this year, um, we are going to implement a safety project that we got funded for, uh, through ODOT Safety Programs. We're gonna upgrade four intersections on Refugee, which is gonna be Pickerton and Refugee, which I'm sure anybody that travels that knows that needs it. It's gonna have a new signal, it's gonna have turn lanes in all directions, and we're gonna take as much of the skew out of that intersection as we can. So that should be a tremendous improvement up there. Also, Education Way, Miller, and Harmon Road are gonna get signal upgrades. We're also going to, uh, do a, a different, how do I explain this? But basically just a different timing setup for the signals. So the corridor itself will work together as a unit better, as far as moving people, and not individual lanes that sometimes contradict each other, don't help each other, so on and so forth. So we're really excited about that. Um, it's about a three and a half billion dollar project, and this is the second phase, um, working to the ultimate, ultimate, uh, upgrade of Refugee Road. So we're also, we put an application in for pedestrian cross road, road walks, excuse me, pedestrian crosswalks and, um, and bike lanes and whatnot to, to basically go from the city of Pickerton all the way out to the Pickerton Refugee Area, past the, uh, the high school, and ultimately, we wanna make it out to Tollgate Schools. So that's kind of a, a, a separate thing that we've applied for because there was an opportunity. If we can get that, get it built now, great. If not, our next phase of Refugee Road is to do a three, uh, a three-lane corridor through there with the ability to be able to widen that out to five lanes in the future. So our goal is to build three lanes, but have it all designed for five, so everything works together to try and save as much of that initial, uh, construction piece as we can when we get on down the line to the five-lane section. And just so everybody knows, the five-lane section, that projection, from a traffic modeling standpoint, isn't till about 2040. So we got a little ways to go before we feel that kind of pressure, but it'll come. So we also have an opportunity on Refugee Road for a private-public partnership with a developer, and we're working with him on the finances of that. Um, and if that goes through, that could really, um, go a long ways in speeding up the next phase of Refugee Road and allowing us to accomplish all that stuff. Our TID has been extremely busy. Um, when I came into office, Holly Matty, our former director of, of, uh, regional planning, uh, got with me and we talked about the status of the TID and where we thought it could go. Um, we looked around the state and a lot of, a lot of TIDs were doing a lot of big things to state, especially in the Cincinnati area and down there. So I latched onto that. Um, we got ahold of the attorney that represented a lot of those clients down there, uh, started talking to him, and then we started, you know, full force trying to grow our TID into, into something that can do something. Uh, and what I mean by that is we're approaching our first project right now. Um, we're working with a developer in the Boswell, Boswell Road and Hill Road area to do a realignment of that road and a widening project. Um, we're right on the cusp of getting that deal done. If we can, that's gonna be a huge, huge accomplishment for the TID. Uh, I'm really proud of where that's come, and it's not just me. Uh, it was a lot of Holly's insight and a lot of the work of the other members on that, but it's going really well. We expect with the development interest that we have out here that we're gonna have opportunities for a lot of these public-private partnerships. Uh, we wanna take full advantage of that. Um, the TIDs in these public-private partnerships really are the way that agencies the size of the county engineer's office can get things done. Cause we typically don't have the kind of funding it takes to build, you know, major, major intersections, uh, regularly realignments, things like that. There's only a limited amount of funding money we can go after, so these are the key. Um, we've spent some good examples around central Ohio and also, like I mentioned, southwest Ohio for us to follow, and we've done that. Um, things seem to be going very well, and we're really, really excited about what the TID is gonna bring to the table in the future. Other than that, we are not building a connector road in five years, as everybody, uh, has heard. So that connector road, once again, is, is simply an idea, uh, that we wanna have in place in case the need comes. Because if we don't have that idea in place, um, and it, and it's not familiar to, to the big players in town like Morpsey and ODOT, it just makes it that much harder if we have a need for something like that to get it going. So we've got it there, it's in front of them, they know we have interest in it if the timing's right and we have the right kind of development, but that's all it is right now, and that's where it's gonna stay until something else happens. So with that, I'm conclude by listening and learn. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Lutz, a question for county engineer. How things go last night? Over.
Oh, they, things went fine. The pavement temperatures are warm, so that always works in our favor. It allows us to get things off the road much, much quicker.
Commissioner Fix, questions for county engineer Jeremiah.
Not really a question, cause Jeremiah and I talk a lot, but, um, a comment. I'm remembering the days of your predecessor and, and how, you know, the roads were plowed and they were kinda kept up, and it feels like we're in a whole different world right now where our county engineer's office and the transportation improvement district are tackling really big projects and getting them done. And I just wanted to thank you for making that change happen over time. I know it's taken some time, um, but, uh, your persistent efforts are paying off and the county's better for it, so thank you.
I appreciate that. Commissioner Fix, thank you.
I'll, I'll join Commissioner Fix. I appreciate you, operations for your office as well. Uh, do you have any questions, Commissioner?
Not at this time, sir. Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Lutz, Commissioner Fix, thanks for the opportunity to talk.
The commission sets aside an opportunity for voters or taxpayers to address the commission. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and begin with your name, residential address. Would you have a, uh, three-minute rule today? Uh, so I would appreciate your courtesy on that, and if you get over that, I may ask you to conclude your remarks. Please know that is without regard to content, that is only time.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Ray Steeman, 2444 West Point Road, Lancaster, Ohio. Uh, it used to be that all meetings in this nation began with prayer. And this is one of the key things to any nation, is to be in supporting moral and Christian and, uh, ideas, to support each other and be helpful to each other. It seems like the powers in the administration in Washington D.C. and come down are trying to destroy the family in many ways, and that's the key to any government, the family to be together. So at this time, I'd like to pray. Lord, we thank you and praise you for this day, for the people that we have and the leadership, we lift them, Lord, that they would look to, look to you and be more observant of what you would have us do, and you've written a book for us to study and to read from called the Bible. And that's a guide for us, and I just pray that people in this room are aware of it and use it in their daily walk. Lord, be with the people that are here today to speak, help them to get their point across, and we have listening ears. We thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Proverbs 14:34 states that righteousness exalteth a nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. God outlines three steps that cause nations to fall. First is spiritual apostasy, that's compromise, corruption, and confusion. And secondly, there's moral awfulness, and thirdly, there's political anarchy. General Douglas MacArthur, I don't know how many of you all remember him, but anyway, uh, he stated back in the 50s these potent, true, and wise words, and I'm gonna quote them from this book. And if you, okay, in this, he, these are his words. "In this day of gathering storms of moral deteriorate, deterioration of the political power spreads its growing infection. It is essential that every spiritual force be mobilized to defend and preserve the religious base upon which this nation is founded. For it has been this base which has been the motivating impulse to our moral and national growth. History fails to record a single precedent in which a nation subject, subject to moral decay have not passed into political and economic decline. There has been either a spiritual, um, reawakening to overcome the moral lapse or a progressive deterioration leading to ultimate national disaster." Now, which of these, we have to ask this question, which of these either, uh, spin, is it a spin, excuse me, a spiritual reawakening to overcome the moral lapse, or is it a progressive determination leading to ultimate national disaster? Do you think, do you think that the decisions made in this local, state, and national level are bringing this nation and the whole world to? And then, the same author of this book had these words to say. Where did our trouble begin? Because our trouble is primarily spiritual, it actually goes back to the church. The church went into apostasy, and when, then our problem centered in the home with the drug problems and the generation gap, and trouble now has moved into political circles, and we have anarchy. People say that if we could just change this or that and put this party or that party, and then everything would be fine, unquote. All of this is perfect nonsense. Excuse me. What we need today is to get back to a spiritual foundation, and that is where we went off track, and that is where our trouble began. We have seen in the Book of Judges, that's in the Bible, the philosophy of history and the hoop of history. It still is rolling. Frankly, I'm disturbed because it has never changed. We today are in the midst of a political anarchy. God have mercy on America. And you know, this book was written back in 86 by, uh, J. Vern Minkety, and he is quite a Bible, um, teacher. And, um, and then those words of MacArthur, they were uttered back in the 50s. I think we had wisdom, folks, and we need more wisdom. Thank you very much.
Now, by seeming to talk fast, it's because I've timed myself, and I gotta do that to get it all in in three minutes.
You're very.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Drum. I'm not representing anyone other than myself. I wish to address the issue of individual property rights and large solar projects. It is generally accepted that as much as we want to use our property any way we want, we are limited by applicable zoning and other laws. The general rule, as I understand it, is that zoning controls use of real estate except for uses by, quote, "public utilities," unquote. The, as found on the Ohio Power Siding Board website, Ohio Revised Code Section 4905.02 and 4905.03, subsection C, states that an entity is considered a public utility if it supplies electricity, quote, "delivered to consumers in this state," unquote. I repeat, delivered to consumers in this state. AEP, for example, delivers power directly into consumers' homes through its power lines. AEP purchases services and materials such as coal, cable, et cetera, but those providers are not public utilities because their product is provided to the utility, not to the consumer. So too, solar farms run their electric lines to the utility lines, not into the consumers' homes. Consumers pay their usage fees directly to the public utility, not to the solar companies. Hence, until Senate Bill 52 applies, solar companies are not public utilities. Farmers and other citizens confronted by large solar projects are confused as to the issues, the law, and how to proceed. They do not have the money to pay the expensive hourly legal fees needed to effectively compete against well-organized, well-financed solar companies. Instead of addressing the issue that large solar projects are not public utilities so that their zoning would govern and largely prohibit the projects in farm areas, somehow control over local zoning decisions got transferred to a statewide agency that governs only public utilities. I believe that agency had no jurisdiction to authorize large solar projects at all because such projects were not public utilities. Hence, the agency had no authority to make decisions about them. There is a possibility that Ohio Agriculture and others were led astray on this issue, but regardless, the people through their legislators took action to restore local control over property use by adopting Senate Bill 52, which allows the adoption of solar exclusion zones. Such adoption would help restore local control over land use in accordance with the law as it stood before it became obfuscated in various ways. I do not like the way some things may have occurred in this state to force large solar projects into the lives and communities of rural Ohio, and I therefore encourage the commission to adopt a countywide exclusion zone for solar projects to correct the situation.
Hi, uh, I'm Paul McCord. I live on 8640 East Robner Road, Northeast. Sorry, not East, uh, North, Robner Road, Northeast. Um, I'm just here for my family, my wife and I, Selena McCord. Um, and, uh, we have six young children, and we are part of this, uh, project that's, uh, that's, um, going about the Eastern Cotton Hill Project, and, uh, my wife homeschools our six young kids, and we are home all the time. The project is slated to go around our whole property, and we have some, uh, some real health concerns with, um, EMF and, uh, our well-water, uh, chemicals, and, uh, so I just, I'm just here just to show my, um, this approval of, of this project, and I just wanted to share that, so, thank you.
Morning. Um, my name's Justin George. I live 5760 Elder Road, Southern Ohio. Um, I'm a multi-generational farmer. Um, we were told about a solar panel company coming in, or area, um, kind of been told that, you know, 30 years is the life expectancy of this project. Well, in, in this box here, like my grandparents before me, these are, our farm's been around, this is the deeds from land grant from our farm with Thomas Jefferson and James Madison signature on it. We've been here for a little, almost 200 years. Now, the problem that I see coming with this project, this is my son, he's got his own cow herd operation, feedlot operations, with his brother there, they run about 100 head through it. Now, the economic implications that this might put on because this solar panel farm, or we can elect co-farm, but operation will border our farm on two sides. Now, the problem that I have with it, let alone, we're just gonna tackle the economic footprint, what's that gonna do to my property value? Because we operate on a, on assets, a farm does. We're, we're cash poor, but asset rich. So if this, you know, operation comes in, builds a solar panel on three sides, my farm, two sides, my farm, whatever, my land value goes down 25%, that kills me. I mean, I've lost 25% of my wealth. Now, that being said, being on two parts of my farm, the way the topography of the la, the ground lays, what are we gonna do about water runoff above and below ground? I put tile in, drainage tile, it will cut off 80% of my groundwater flow. So does my, if they cut the mains off and stuff like that, does my farm become a swamp? He's gonna help me out with that, you know? We've been here for two hu, almost 200 years, um, in this community, and when something like this comes in and is taking thousands of acres out, it's almost up to, what is it, a tenth of the percent of farm ground in Walnut Township? We better open our eyes, you know? Uh, to me, like a land grab, don't know what you guys think, but, um, we just better keep our eyes open, because how am I supposed to pass on my multi-generational farm to these, my children, if I have to compete with something like that? So I have to say, thank you. And anybody can look at these documents if they want to see the signatures.
My name's Melissa Connor, and I live at 7710 Cattail Road. And the last thing I wanted to do today was follow Justin George and Thomas Jefferson.
James Madison.
And, I'm sorry, James Madison, we can't let him out. Um, however, I would like to respectfully request that a prohibition be placed on industrial solar projects, those projects that generate over 50 megawatts and above of solar energy in Fairfield County. Myself and like-minded citizens of our township have been researching the effects of living near solar developments and are deeply concerned about the many aspects, including but not limited to, mental and physical health and safety to humans, quality of surface water, groundwater, including aquifers, any water source used for public consumption or recreation, land, soil, including drainage and erosion issues, vegetation and other environmental concerns, including deforestation of the area, health and safety of domestic animals, livestock, wildlife, and aquatic life, hazards and effects of above-ground and underground construction materials, including such materials, degrading, collapsing, and shedding, noise and light pollution, solar arrays, potential, I'm sorry, solar array fire potential, inverter fires, battery energy storage fires, chemical contamination, ability of panels to withstand our weather, including hailstorms and tornadoes, electromagnetic field radiation, glint and glare, leaching of toxins from damaged solar panels, stormwater erosion, and visual buffering deficiencies of a solar array, damage to our road and bridge infrastructure, and the impact of such projects on property evaluations. We will continue to research each of these issues of concern, but no matter our findings, it will not negate the fact that prime farmland, some of the best in the state, is being threatened with ruin. That a few people are willing to sacrifice land that is used to produce our food for an experiment in diversification in electrical power continues to baffle me. I have heard property rights used as a defense of these abhorrent decisions. The truth is, the landowners involved surrender their property rights when they sign the solar developers' lease. They'll not be permitted on the property even to take a look, see. We have zoning throughout most of Fairfield County, which is meant to protect us from the poor decisions of others. Should farmland-zoned rural residential be used for solar projects, then we have no zoning. It should be noted that Walnut Township has already put rules on the books regarding the community solar-scale projects, which House Bill 501 gives them jurisdiction over. It is with all of these thoughts in mind that I ask you to protect Fairfield County as Senate Bill 52 gives you the privilege and responsibility to do so for the citizens regarding industrial solar installations. Please tell the industrial solar developers that Fairfield County is not for sale.
I would like to address the commission at this time. On behalf of all the commissioners' office, we thank you all for coming. Anything?
I think it's commissioner.
Thank you. Administration update.
All right, we can review American Rescue Plan update from the 30.6 received. 23.5 has been appropriated, 11.7 expanded, and 4.2 encumbered or obligated. Jeff Hart, anything to add to that?
Um, I will note that we are looking to have some folks that have received grants come in and provide some updates about their projects, um, in the coming months. Family Adult and Children First Council received a $200,000, $200,000 grant, um, and this was with the assistance of PIGS Partners, um, that's providing grant writing assistance. So this is an award for $50,000 for four years from the Ohio Children's Trust Fund Early Childhood Safety Initiative. It was a competitive grant, and so appreciate PIGS Partners' work with our council. Um, we'd like to introduce Alyssa Wannasik and then Sarah Fortner as well. Uh, there is a resolution on today to appoint Alyssa as, um, a member, I wanna get this right, the Child Abuse and Child Neglect Regional Prevention Council, is that correct?
Central Ohio Regional Prevention Council.
Left that qualifier off. Sarah, um, had served on that particular council and has been promoted, so to speak, to the chair of the council, is that correct, Sarah? And so we are looking to, um, for you all to consider the appointment of Alyssa to take the place. Stephanie Fife from the Health Department also serves on that board or council from Fairfield County. Alyssa, you wanna add anything?
I just appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
And Alyssa's official title is Screening and Operations Manager, uh, with our JFS Protective Services, and then Sarah serves as the Deputy Director of Protective Services. Anything you wanna add, Sarah?
Um, so in Alyssa's new role as the Screening and Operations Manager, she serves in the capacity of doing a lot of community outreach and collaboration, and so her role on that council will really allow her the opportunity to continue that work, to best, um, kind of appropriate and understand where services are needed, to provide some of that guidance to the council. She would make a great fit if you guys would consider.
Well, on, on behalf of the commissioners, thank you to both of you for the work that you do. As you, sure, sure you already know that, uh, child protective services and helping children who are in difficult situations is, uh, something that I think all three commissioners, uh, care deeply about, and, uh, I'm never confident that we find all the ways and opportunities that we should, uh, to express our appreciation to the folks who help with that. Privilege to have another opportunity to, to try to express that.
And Alyssa has been with us since 2010, but has been in the field of child welfare since 2007, which is almost unheard of these days to, to hang out there that long, and Sarah's background is probably just a little bit longer than that. And, and Sarah's background is probably just a little bit longer than that. Thank you to both. And I know that Sarah, you got to run off for another meeting, so we won't, we won't think badly of you. Okay, so we did receive communication from CCAO regarding the indigent defense reimbursement rate dropping to eighty percent. I know, I knew this would get a reaction here. So uh, there's been communications to state and local leaders regarding this, where uh, the Ohio Public Defender has painted an uncertain picture regarding state reimbursement. Um, state, uh, state public defender Tim Young sent a letter to Governor Mike Dwyane and also Senate President and Speaker of the House regarding this. He revealed that the final reimbursement rate for the current state fiscal year will likely be approximately eighty percent and that requests the rest of the fiscal year will be reimbursement at seventy percent. So CCAO is encouraging uh, our commissioners and others to reach out to legislators um, to stress the importance for uh, full funding of indigent defense and not putting that burden on the counties.
If I might just for a moment on that. So the Ohio Public Defender's Office a couple of years ago went all about the county um, encouraging the defense bar to demand of their commissioners that they be paid more. And uh, defense bars all across the state did that and commissioners all across the state increased funding uh, to, to the defense bar for indigent defense. All of that occurred at the prompting of the Ohio Public Defender's Office. Who is now complaining about the success of their effort to get everybody to raise their rates in the form of reducing the reimbursement rate. Um, it is, if it, of course, we should encourage our legislators to pay the full boat bill on, on indigent defense. But at some point along the way, um, we should perhaps also encourage state government to uh, replace or somehow restrain the Public Defender's Office from conducting itself in such a fiscally irresponsible way. To go about and demand that everybody increase their, their rates to pay indigent defense and then complain that you don't have enough money to pay for it, seems kind of ridiculous continually, annually, every year for thirteen years that I've been a commissioner. Please continue.
For twenty twenty-two, with one month still missing uh, for this information, we were at a ninety-one percent reimbursement rate, just for your information, Commissioner. All right, uh, Pleasantville Mayor uh, Jason Henderson provided information regarding a railroad crossing improvement that he's been working on for the past few years with Knawa River Railroad, also known as KNWA. There are two railroad crossings in the village and the one at North Main Street uh, has significantly deteriorated and there's a high flow of traffic there. Um, so he has finally received some communication back from the railroad um, and believes that there could be uh, some improvements coming to that particular crossing. Him being unsure of how that process unfolds, wanted to make you all aware of that in case the railroad company would reach out to the county directly. Last evening, we had a, um, a great economic development strategic plan and land use plan update public meeting at the Workforce Center. There was approximately a hundred and fifty folks in attendance. Commissioner Fix, Commissioner Levesey uh, were there. This was an opportunity for folks to provide input on the future of development in the county. And I think, yeah, Bennett's got some pictures up there uh, to show. Um, this, there was uh, some table exercises that took place for folks to be able to indicate the uh, those dots you see on the tables uh, where they were seeing, um, seeing a desire for additional housing in the county, retail or commercial development, economic development, and then also green space. Um, I think it was um, everybody appreciated having the opportunity to participate. We had a question and answer portion at the end. Um, I think it was a good way to get information out and help educate folks about what is taking place in the county and give them a voice in that process. Rick, would you add anything?
No, uh, our consultant said this is the biggest turnout they've seen for a county planning session. Um, municipal ones, township ones usually get a lot more uh, you know, feedback and input, but yeah, this just shows that there's a lot of interest in what's happening in our county. And I thought our, our consultant did a great job putting things together. I want to thank the commissioners for their leadership and not being afraid to answer some tough questions from the crowd. Um, you know, I think that's always appreciated in these forums. And thanks to my, my staff for getting everything ready there.
Yeah, they did a great job.
And, and uh, I'll strike the buzzer. Well, after.
The after meeting. Commissioner Fix, so Levesey, would you like to add anything?
So um, I, I didn't know what to expect. I didn't know if we'd have twenty people in the room or two hundred. And um, I kind of walked around the room as the night was unfolding and people were working on their maps. And I was really uh, pleasantly surprised that the message that we're putting out there that growth is coming and we can't stop it, we can only manage it, seems to be taking hold in that people who were, and there were tables of mostly farmers or, you know, um, but they recognize that we do need to plan for commercial development, we do need to plan for residential development. And every map had, um, you know, almost every table used all their dots, right? They had different colored dots for different kinds of development and green space. And uh, I was really um, pleasantly surprised by not only the turnout, but um, by the way people took that very seriously and were uh, passionate about what their thoughts were as to where the county should go. I can only imagine trying to mash all those map, fourteen maps together into one will be quite a fun exercise. But um, it was, it was great to get that kind of feedback. And you know, anytime we get a chance to directly answer questions, I, I embrace that. Um, people don't always like the answer that you give, but at least they appreciate that you're, you're providing them with the best answer you have at that time. And I think the opportunity to be direct, um, you know, that, that always helps. So I, I thought it was a really, really cool night and uh, appreciate all the work that you and your team are doing and Ben's and his team. It's uh, we're making progress.
So Jeremiah, I've been there last night. He could have actually said, no, we're not going yet. Connect the road.
Well, I had somebody there last night. And that way he hid. They said, Mr. Fix did a really good job up there.
You laughed.
I did, but I'd probably not do it.
All right, moving on. Um, April fourth will be the first apartment had an elected official roundtable of the year and we will be holding that at the Ag Center from one to four. Uh, we did get feedback from the group previously of what they liked, what they'd like to see differently about the roundtables. And one of those things was um, offering a lunch option, which would also provide an opportunity to network and just catch up with each other. So we will be offering that this time, that uh, the agenda and information on that lunch option will go out later this week. We would need folks to sign up and, and commit for that, that lunch portion to make sure we would go forward with that. Highlights of resolutions, administrative approvals, the review packet does contain a list of those. And resolution review, there are twenty-two resolutions for the voting meeting. Couple that I'll point out, we do have a resolution to approve an amended agreement to continue the energy aggregation and purchasing program with Palmer Energy as part of CCAO. And appreciation to Amy for her work on that, as well as uh, her work on uh, reviewing the different energy uh, aggregation contracts she has done in recent times. We also have four resolutions amending term expirations for Adam H. Board members. This is just um, reflecting um, us getting in sync with O R C. Some in the past have been approved for a calendar year. We need to get them on that expiration date for June thirtieth and not exceed four years. We also have the resolution on to appoint Alyssa Wannasik. Um, and then also we need to adjust Stephanie Fife's resolution uh, to have her term ending at that appropriate time. And then lastly, a resolution, uh, a supportive property for the Clean Ohio Agricultural Easement Purchase Program with the Ohio Department of Agriculture. And there are two properties in that particular resolution. Their budget review.
Yeah, please.
Thank you. Recognition County Auditor Dr. Brown congratulated H R I T and payroll for a successful training held on March eighth. County Auditor Dr. Brown congratulated Stacy Knight, Kurt Truax and Nick Dilly for participating in a massive open online course on cartography. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked Greg Porcher, Michaela Finley and Rachel Elsie for the record high return rate of current agricultural use valuation program applications. More than ninety percent of the applications were returned prior to the deadline, first deadline of March sixth. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked Michaela Finley, Jess Ferguson, Julie White, Randy Carter and Stacy Knight for job shadowing efforts. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked Kurt Truax for updating Board of Election precinct map so efficiently. And then lastly, a thank you to Ruchi Rice and Brian Plummer and Dan Neely for their efforts on some cybersecurity initiatives. Dan, I'm sorry, uh, Bennett, calendar review, please.
Under calendar review and invitations received, Transportation Improvement District Meeting, March fourteenth at one P M. At the Record Center, the Transit Government Studies Steering Committee Meeting, March fourteenth at two P M. A meeting with Chancellor of Higher Education, March fifteenth at ten thirty A M. In Columbus, the ODOT District Five Central Ohio, twenty twenty-three Construction Kickoff, March fifteenth at two P M. The Family Adult and Children First Council Meeting, March sixteenth at eight thirty A M. At the Ag Center. And the twenty twenty-three State of Pickering Ten on March sixteenth at eleven A M. At the Wigwam Event Center. Move on to correspondence.
Yes, please, Bennett. Thank you.
Under correspondence, a press release from the Board of Commissioners Office, March tenth, twenty twenty-three, Fairfield County to celebrate Sunshine Week. A press release from the Office of the County Auditor, March tenth, twenty twenty-three, Fairfield County Auditor's Office to participate in Sunshine Week. Release of easement, South Central Power Company released twenty-foot easement granted by Fairfield County Board of Commissioners. Municipal Court Receipt and Payment Report, February twenty twenty-three. The Ohio Health Community Benefit Report, Fiscal Year twenty twenty-two. Office of the County Auditor Fact Sheet, City of Lancaster's ballot issue for road improvements. Columbus Business First, Author John Bush, March eighth, twenty twenty-three, proposed redevelopment of former Lancaster shoe factory awarded three point three million historic preservation tax credit. Fairfield County Court of Common Pleas, General Division Annual Report, twenty twenty-two. Memo from the Auditor, Dr. Carrie Brown, March eighth, twenty twenty-three, Subjects, Procedures for Minor Subdivisions or Lot Splits, Pay Advice Information, Tax at Senate Review, Council Meetings, and the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Fairfield County Clerk of Courts Annual Report, twenty twenty-two. Columbus Business First, Author Jeffrey Consol, March ninth, twenty twenty-three. The Columbus Opportunity Workforce Chiefs Team Up to Fill Intel-Driven Demand. Press Release, Office, Office of County Auditor, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, Dr. Carrie L. Brown sworn in as Fairfield County Auditor. Press Release from Fairfield County Family Adult Children First Council, March fourteenth, Fairfield County, excuse me, F A C F C Council awarded two hundred thousand for early childhood safety initiative. Letter from a Fairfield County resident regarding proposed solar energy farm. Press Release from Fairfield County Adam H., March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, Fairfield County Adam, Adam H. welcomes new board members. And lastly, Notice of Construction Activities from Texas Eastern Transmissions.
Today, the sheriff reports two sixty-six with thirty-one of those being contracted placements. So I have.
Thank you. Under Old Business, if I might, I just want to touch base on a meeting that, that um, we'll host here at two o'clock today. Um, the county has retained the services of R L S, which is a consulting company that helps communities think about their public transit, uh, policy and solutions. We've really asked two questions of that consultant for the coming four months of, of study. And, and one is, are we as a community hitting the right policy note as it relates to public transit? Or should we uh, be doing more or better in that regard? That's question number one. Uh, question number two that we're analyzing over the coming months is, should say, for example, Lancaster Fairfield Public Transit, which is a City of Lancaster department, should that be a City of Lancaster department? Or perhaps should that be a countywide operation uh, and perhaps rehoused from the City of Lancaster to Fairfield County? That question is being asked in cooperation with the City of Lancaster or not fighting over it. And at that meeting today at two o'clock, we'll be representatives from all the entities that have a slice of the transit pie, uh, Fairfield Center for Disabilities, Veteran Services, Wheels on Wheels, Salvation Army, Lancaster Fairfield Public Transit. Also have with us uh, in that meeting at two o'clock, representatives from a number of uh, employers, including some of the largest in Fairfield County. Um, because of the, what we know they're experiencing in terms of the difficulty some of their workforce is having engaged as to and from work. Um, so our, our long goal here is to make sure that we're doing what we should be doing or could be doing to facilitate those folks who want to work. We want to make sure that there's some means or mechanism for them to get to and from work. And, and I know when some people hear that, they think, well, we all drove to this meeting. What's their problem? Get a car. Um, but if you, if you do some math at twelve or thirteen dollars an hour or fourteen and try to figure out what, what you have left after taxes and how much your rent is and what your other bills are and then the cost to buy a car and insure that car and figure out, does that all work? It doesn't. Um, so we're just trying to, to be a good partner with our local employers uh, to see if there's a, a better way and make sure that people who want to work um, have a, a, a pathway uh, to get there. So that's what that two o'clock meeting is about. Commissioner Levesey, anything additional under Old Business?
So it's uh, could be old, could be new, but regardless, uh, grant that was given to uh, former Drew Shoe Company, it's pretty significant. And we use that area for storage forever and ever. It's facing, it's a blighted area, but uh, so I'm pretty excited about that. I think the overall projects, uh, twenty million with about a three point three um, grant from the state, historic preservation. But I appreciate everybody's work that was involved in that, the Office, Fisher's Office and the Governor's Office uh, with the help on that because I, I do think that it stains the look of that area. That explains.
And Commissioner, I think you're referring to the Essex voting of the Drew Shoe Building.
Yeah, same area.
Yes, it is. Very close.
Breaks home.
Commissioner Fix, anything under Old Business?
Nothing.
Under New Business, I have nothing. Commissioner Levesey, anything under New?
Well, thank you.
Commissioner Fix?
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anything else? I didn't, anybody like bring the attention to the commission at this time? Dr. Brown.
I can forecast um, a couple of different budget activities. Um, the first being a change in the estimated revenues of a net twenty thousand, but a rather significant increase in sales tax and a rather significant decrease in jail rental income at this point in time, given what we know today. We'll continue to monitor that, so I wanted to forecast that net change still on the positive side, about twenty thousand, but some rather significant number of changes within there. We'll make sure that that information is provided in detail as well. And then when I was county administrator, I always asked for department heads and elected officials if they're able to make a change within their budget that um, can accommodate without asking for new appropriations to do that. So I'm forecasting a resolution where I'm taking my own advice and we'll have an account-to-account transfer um, in the General Fund Department to relate to um, payouts for retirement. Um, made possible though from a real estate assessment, I'm taking on a one-time contractual services charge for advertising. So just wanted to forecast that resolution as well as I mentioned that um, activity for estimated revenues.
Curious that, I know you said details will, will.
I have them, but I.
I thought it was my. I, I'm curious, if the sales tax revenue estimate was twenty-five point one, and I might not have that number correct. Um, I'm curious as to where it went from what I think was twenty-five point one to, to X, which.
Twenty-six, twenty-six point six.
And so um, on behalf of the Commissioners Office, we appreciate your continued vigilance and looking at those issues and keeping those updated. Um, I also think that it was probably uh, I also think that it was probably, sure, it'd been wise to be somewhat modest in that sales tax adjustment, particularly given the, the news late last week that, that caused some consternation regarding the financial markets, banking system. For us to be too overly aggressive about estimates in the near term, perhaps not be a good idea, we kind of all need to see what the follow-through is on that.
We do have some uncertainty in some other areas, we'll just keep monitoring that.
Yeah, so, you know, I think the bottom line is that the Commissioner's Office and the Auditor's Office remain in sync regarding fiscal estimates. And the Commissioner's Office remains patient for data to drive the decision-making on what those different revenue streams are going to be. I, I think, you know, I'm not asking for any adjustments that, that you haven't already taken into account. I suspect that our estimate on investment revenue is light, and that's fine. You know, to, to have some little pockets of safety in the overall picture is perfectly, perfectly fine.
Just to follow up on what Commissioner Levy was speaking about relating to the Essex Building's three point three million housing credits, just wanted to acknowledge Amanda Everett specifically and her diligent efforts, as well as Kathleen Young with the Governor's Office. If you see either of those two, you know, we mentioned teams that are working on it, but they were very positive, very favorable, and continuing to ask questions to pursue that opportunity.
I was passing through a convenience store this morning, saw a headline, and I think it was the Lancaster Journal Gazette, something about folks are interested, Lancaster is interested in downtown renewal or something like that. And I, I couldn't help but have a little deja vu moment, because it would seem, we've been seeing headlines like that since approximately nineteen eighty-seven, when Anchor Hocking moved their world headquarters out of downtown, and it seemed to be trying to recover ever since. But that is a really encouraging step in a direction towards perhaps someday a more robust downtown, we'll see.
Wanted to also mention that the C O, Triple A, Executive Director, I think is his title, Steve Sinifani, had reached out to indicate that Professor Dean Maury and Judge Maury will be receiving the Hall of Fame honorary induction into the Senior Sisters in Hall of Fame, I believe in May. And we'll all get more information about that, but since I have that information, I wanted to share it with you.
Thank you. Jason in the Hall of Fame, right?
He wants to be nominated at a later point in time. Not yet, it's not, not yet ready.
Point three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sometimes when you're just like the greatest of something, you don't really need to be told. Any other issue, item? Move on to our voting calendar. Please rise if you're able, join us in the Pleasantville meetings.
Pleasantville meetings, who live in the United States, we should say the same as one nation, the government, the individual, the community, and justice. Thank you.
Rochelle, do we have any announcements?
No announcements, Commissioner.
Rochelle, your voice changed.
Sometimes you get in the habit.
Thank you, Bennett. We want the approval minutes for the meeting of March seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Summated.
Second. Scotten. Quick note on that, I wanted to again thank Mayor Anderson for the hospitality and nursing us Pleasantville that night. The meeting was particularly well-attended, and that was appreciated. With folks there on, on both sides of the solar issue, and I was quite taken with their, their courtesy, precision, and content for all that folks had to share with the, the commissioners that night, it was really, really good meeting, and I really appreciated it. Further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Minutes passed, three zero. From the Commissioners, Resolution Twenty Twenty Three dash zero three dot one four dot A, a resolution to approve an amended partnership agreement to continue the energy aggregation and purchasing program with Palmer Energy as part of the County Commissioners Association of Ohio program.
The Commissioners, I move items A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
We referenced these earlier.
I recall. Further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolutions passed, three zero. From the Fairfield County Clerk of Courts Legal Division, Resolution Twenty Twenty Three dash zero three dot one four dot H, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated and a major expenditure object category, Clerk of Courts Legal, Twenty Three Eighteen Computer Fund. Summated.
Second.
Scotten?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Resolution passes, three zero. From Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution Twenty Twenty Three dash zero three dot one four dot I, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated funds and the major object, excuse me, and a major category expense. Summated.
Second.
Discussion?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Resolution passes, three zero. From the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution Twenty Twenty Three dash zero three dot one four dot J, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated and a major expenditure object category, County Engineer, Twenty Twenty Four Motor Vehicle for Contractual Services. The County Engineer, I move items J, K, and L.
Second.
Discussion?
Just briefly on L, that bridge is on Coon Path Road, just west of Stringtown Road, so between Stringtown and one fifty-eight, a lot of traffic there, it's going to be a disruption for people. And the one thing I wanted to point out was, we also have a tremendous amount of full-depth repairs to make on Coon Path Road. We're doing our best right now to, to do both of those projects at the same time under one closure, just to attempt to disrupt people as least as possible.
So, Jeremy, let's touch on that just for a minute. As you know, and folks that may travel Coon Path Road might know, there are certainly times of the day when it's really busy out there. Take like, say, for example, at five to six P M. an hour, sometimes Coon Path Road gets really backed up, people, I guess, coming home from work, I guess. What's the play there when you have to shut that down?
We'll likely direct people to, trucks and whatnot will direct to either state roads, possibly Pleasantville Road. Pedestrians will, will likely direct them to Pleasantville Road. But we all know that people are going to be going, you know, upstream town to get around it and across Carroll Eastern and things like that. The trucks are the major concern, so we're going to focus, focus most of our efforts on making sure that they have a good route to, to get around.
What's, what's the estimated duration?
Six weeks.
Now, I'm going to call you.
You know, it's, it's, it's a rock and hard place. I mean, really, if you boil it down, we have two options. We close the bridge and nobody uses it, or replace it. There is no other option in between, it's at the end of its useful life, so, you know, it's unnecessary when we just try to do it and manage it the best we can.
Understood. Further discussion?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Resolutions passed, three zero. From Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution Twenty Twenty Three dash zero three dot one four dot M, a resolution to approve a memo receipt and expenditure for Fairfield County Job and Family Services Fund Twenty Seven Fifty Eight reimbursing fund.
From Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move items M, N, O, P, Q, R, and S.
Second.
Scotten?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Resolutions passed, three zero. From Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution Twenty Twenty Three dash zero three dot one four dot T, a resolution to approve the purchasing of a gun by a retiring officer. Summated.
Second.
Discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Resolution passes, three zero. From Fairfield, excuse me, from Fairfield County Soil and Water, Resolution Twenty Twenty Three dash zero three dot one four dot U, a resolution of support of property for the Clean Ohio Local Agriculture Easement Purchase Program with the Ohio Department of Agriculture. Summated.
Second.
Scotten?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Resolution passes, three zero. For the payment of bills, Resolution Twenty Twenty Three dash zero three dot one four dot V, a resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board and Commissioner's approval. Summated.
Second.
Scotten?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Resolution passes, three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, at nine A M.
Two or more commissioners being at the two o'clock meeting, so how did we get into that? Did we, we noticed that as a, as a public meeting? And so, are we recessing and reconvening, or are we adjourning on this meeting? What, what are we doing?
I would suggest adjourn and reconvene because there's the Transportation Improvement District in between, just to make it cleaner.
All right, so on the, on the technicals here, we're adjourning this morning's meeting, then have these other readings on the stand, and then the two o'clock, the, the commission would formally reconvene at that time as a separate meeting. Okay, I was just, I just wasn't sure what we're, is there any other issue, item that anybody'd like to bring the attention to the commission at this time? Good, Jeremy.
Second.
I got a motion to adjourn, second all those embarrassing vows, and I, I post them sound, the motion carries, the commission is adjourned, we do thank you all for coming.